All right, thank you. I will call to order a regular meeting for Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, November 7, 2022, at 6:30 PM. We are on Zoom and downstairs in the office building. And I'm happy to say we not only have a full house online like we usually do, but a full room. It almost feels normal. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which is to him. All right, folks, we have approval of minutes in your packet. You should reset some minutes. One from our last regular meeting on October 3rd and two special meetings, October 25th and November 7th. Entertain a motion for any or all of the above?
Make a motion to approve the minute of November 7th.
What? The number 2nd.
November 7th.
No, I'm back for time. All right, Liza, a second. All right, there's a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, I motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 25th.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 30th.
Second, motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have present to speak. If you are either online or in the room and want to speak, just ask you to either raise your virtual hand, raise your hand in the room, state your name for the record, and I ask you to limit yourself to two minutes. For those online, I am going to start in the room just, just because.
John Berg, 34 Red Oak Hill Road, Wellington, Connecticut. My understanding is Bill Benell is before the board tonight to discuss joining as an alternate of Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm just here to endorse Bill. He's also on our Housing Authority Board. I've known Bill since the early 80s. A reliable guy, straightforward, very helpful on the boards. And it's my endorsement as an alternate in the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think he would be a great addition to their board.
Thank you so much.
Hi, here's my speak on support for Bill Benell as well. I've prepared some comments.
And you just state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Tess Kapowski at 1841 Hamilton Road in Wellington. I'm here to speak and endorse Bill Benell as an alternate for the agency. I prepared some remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll speak next.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to submit this letter and support of Bill Benell to be appointed as the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate. I've known Bill for over 10 years and had first become acquainted with him when I hired him for a lawn care service. I was not a regular customer of Bill's and I called him just to fill in for certain periods of time till I could return to take care of the lawn myself. But I'm trying to convey is that I was bitching when I needed help. He came through for me. The work was done well and on time in our contractual home call arrangement was seamless. I quickly recognized that he was a good neighbor and now considered to be a good friend. Bill knew that I served in the towns and the wetlands commission and he called me on two separate occasions seeking some background information. Of both occasions, land use issues were never before the wetlands commission, rather they were under the Planning and Zoning Commission authority. Bill called to ask me about the process. I shared within my experiences how the wetlands commission would go about considering that application, the public hearing process, and how the process can be made. He asked a lot of good questions, listened and asked thoughtful follow-up questions. Bill was measured in our conversations. Preparing this letter, I did a quick search online as to what the duties of the planning and zoning commissioners would be as defined by state statute. I learned that state statutes does provide for the duties of the commission, but does not spend by the duties of individual commissioners. I searched our town website to read the latest annual report, which was online as 2018, to learn about the duties of the commission. And includes, you know, developing regulations, assisting in, you know, leading the town less, planet conservation development and other activities. According to 1999 Connecticut Journal of Assembly paper, with regard to the duty of an individual commission member, it states in practice, planning and zoning commissioners are expected to regularly attend the commission's meetings and public hearings, become informed about the issues before the commissions, and demonstrate good judgment. As a former inland wetlands commission, I would like to offer what I see as important attributes that a land use commission membership possess. Desire to serve the town, complete understanding of the regulations, commitment, the ability to ask good questions and being sure that any decision made is based on fact and within the regulations. Being fair and impartial, being an active listener and being attentive to detail, knowing the limits of your authority, being respectful and considerate of all parties and being able to live with others. When Bill asked me to provide a letter of support after wanting to serve on the commission, he responded that he saw there were, there were openings, that the issues coming before the commission were interesting and that he wanted to serve in town. Bill's past and current professional work experience always shows his ability to understand conflict processes and procedures and which requires him to be very attentive to detail. Bill has great interpersonal skills. As I have on to vote, I believe Bill has the attributes of being a good commissioner. In summary, I am pleased to provide my support for Bill to serve as an alternate in the Planning and Zoning Commission and encourage you all to vote for his appointment to that commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Peter Lintich, 97 Triad Road, also Wellington Republican Town Committee Chair. I'm here to endorse our nomination for the Planning and Zoning vacancy of Michael Johansson of 37 Old South Pointon Road. We have interviewed Michael, he's an outstanding young man pending the planning and zoning meetings. He takes a wide interest in town affairs. He's been a long time resident. He has wide support in the community. And he gives an outstanding addition to this board and I urge for his full consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room before I move online? Present to speak.
Are we doing this now? Are we just going to wait till?
So, so present to speak would be now, the rest of the meeting is to the board.
Nominated.
Well, there's no nominations.
Okay.
The board.
Steph Summers for my road. I would just like to endorse Bill on behalf of the Democratic Town Committee in Wellington. I've known Bill for quite a while. He was active on the strategic team for on Wellington eight years ago and was one of those people that has calm solutions and a, an array of background skills that really helped think out the strategies for that, for that battle in town and on behalf of the town collaborated a lot with the town when we did that. But we were also working on this, on the state and federal levels too in that. And I just think when you look at what Bill's credentials are, is he's a roll up the sleeves guy when it comes to how he gives of his, of his personal time with Wayne and different groups like that, what, how he volunteers and he's run, he runs two businesses. So he's a, an independent businessman, but he has a long background in the, in the materials procurement industry for large construction product projects. And I think that along with this sort of grassroots nature and his social skills make him an imminently good representative on the PCC as an alternate.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the room before I go online? All right, so I'm going to go online, I'm just going to go left to right as I see hands. So I'll start with Mr. Tanaka.
Thank you, Pete Tanaka, 125 Mason Road, can you hear me? I'm calling to object to the process that was used at the town transfer station to hand out the new stickers. When I arrived, I immediately found a expired registration. My truck has a sticker on it from previous and I had a current driver's license identifying me as a town of Wellington resident. I was told I couldn't enter the station until I had a current pay, up to date registration. And I don't think that it's the town's place to be enforcing motor vehicle law. And I wanted to note that, I was wondering what statute that was used to enforce that. Also, I know that there's a number of people in town who use work vehicles. And as recently as when I was working, my vehicle was registered out of town, although I was paying, Wellington was my tax town. Perhaps if the town crew had a listing from the tax collector showing which vehicles were up to date on paying their taxes on that vehicle, that would have been a far more efficient way of doing it. And it's the fact that we're paying taxes to use that, that facility rather than our vehicles registered in town that's important. I think that if, if you could show probable cause that you're in a town resident, that should be all that it takes to get that sticker for your vehicle. I, and, and I, I didn't like the, the, the tactics used to issue that, and I'd like to register my complaint. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight. I know you'll be discussing appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an alternate role. And I'm just, I wanted to say I'm pleased to be able, I don't know if we'll be able to speak to that during the agenda item. I, we may or may not, but I just want to say I'm pleased to be able to put myself forward for that position again. We went, you know, I'm an architect by trade. I've been a resident of Wellington since 2020 and have been, you know, very outgoing in the town and following along with active Planning and Zoning Commission hearings, particularly since the start of PZ 2210. Also been actively engaged with the School Building Committee and their efforts and trying to, you know, assist and voice support wherever possible as a member of the community. But yeah, I'm pleased to be able to submit myself again. We went through this back in August where I unfortunately had to step away from the appointment because, to avoid any potential liability with an active application before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then I was unable to apply because of an open hearing before planning and zoning again, seeking to modify the regulations that, in, you know, in the interest of the town's plan of conservation and development and designing regs as a whole. So I look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to learn as an alternate from the commission. You know, in advance of perhaps, you know, pursuing a full-time spot during next year's elections. But once again, I thank you guys for your, for your consideration and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tien.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Tien, 26 Eldridge Mills Road. I am Vice Chair of Wellington's Planning and Zoning Commission. Speaking strictly for myself, I would welcome Bill Benell's participation on the commission. I read his letter of interest and he really does seem like he would be a great fit. And I would welcome his participation as an alternate. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, I can drop that hand. Mr. Tal.
Nick Tal, 49 Myrtle. First, I want to say I support James' nomination and I hope that he gets the, the position as the alternate. I mean, he's been here as far as, for months now, always involved. And it'd also be good to have somebody that's sitting on a board that's also not on other boards. We need to diversify our, our population and not just have, you know, I don't know what Bill sits on, but I don't mean any attacks to him, I'm just saying ultimately, we need people maybe serving only on one commission and letting the town people get on, on these boards. Also, I want to speak in regards to the town transfer. To me, it was a, it was a violation of the Fourth Amendment. There was no violations going on. There's no need for town transfer people to be searching the papers of the residents. Yeah, you may think it's funny, but it is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So unless there was a violation that people knew, then I can understand that. Otherwise, you're disrespected in the constitution there. I'll try to stay within the two minutes as best as possible, but planning and zoning blatantly ignore their own regulations. I just want to let you know, by pushing the cannabis establishment within the 500 feet and paid a lawyer to say they can do it. Did they at least reach out to the state for their opinion? The commission said that they were using the building and not the property line as appropriate, which is going against the regulation state 3.1 cannabis retailers shall not be located within 500 feet of a child daycare facility using direct line between any portion, part of a permit premises and any, any part of a lot used, not building, any part of a lot. Lot is in the definition and includes plot and parcel, which is referring to a piece of land. Ultimately, premises is referring to a lot or parcel, which again goes back to the land in which the owner owns, not a building, but the land. They again ignore their own regulations to force the cannabis store within a 500 feet of the childcare facility. This now sets precedent going forward. I just think it's suspicious that the board is selecting to have to go into executive session in regards to the FOIA request. I don't understand why we're forcing $100,000 when we already know what the fiscally responsible path is when it comes to the school situation. We know that, you know, approximately maybe up to $20 million for upgrades. Instead, the town is looking at spending maybe around $35 million on a, on the hall, on the, on the new buildings and such with the auditoriums. Any SDEC, this is my last point, also seems that any SDEC projected enrollment has been pretty close. Since 2000, we went from 630 students to 2010, have a 543. And in 2020, around 420, we've clearly been going down in population. And it seems that Wellington will continue to decrease. And that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. iPhone. Ms. iPhone, you should be able to unmute yourself, identify yourself for the record.
Hello, sorry about that. Marissa Pelletier, 227 River Road. And I was just wanting to just submit my support for James Marshall's application. Obviously, everyone knows he's been very active in all of the planning and zoning meetings. He's passionate, he's detail oriented. He's demonstrated commitment and has an impressive wealth of knowledge related to the planning and zoning. He hands down has my support. He's brought many thought provoking, provoking points, ideas to the table. I believe he would be a very valuable part of the commission and I just wanted to put that out there. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. All right. Anyone else present to speak? Only one. Why, almost everyone in the room spoke. There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for present to speak. All right, item five, it's executive session. So I will make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of a potential litigation legal exposure related to the pending freedom of information request and invite Mike D'Amato, Land Use Agent, and Ryan O'Donnell, Town Attorney. Is there a second, second of Aliza discussion? Seeing none. I will call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion carries. So at this point, we will pause the recording. We're actually going to remove ourselves from the room, so we don't have to make. All right, I'll let the record show that we exited the session at 7:10. It's 7:11 now, that accounts for the time we moved from one room to the other. All right, the next item on the agenda is correspondence. You will see a very lengthy list of correspondence in your email. This is about signage on Ruby Road. We also received something from our state representative. I will just say that as the local traffic authority, these are items that I'm working on.
I think they go off for assistance.
If need be, yeah, so my office works with the state office in that manner, so if we need assistance, we know where we can. All right, I will move on to first selectmen's status updates. The Steve Grants at the Old Town Hall. We have the appropriation of the funding going to town meeting next Monday. And so that's the next step and then we will work on the, we're working already with part on the engineering and the plans and then an RFP. So I will be good to spend money once we have that official appropriation. The School Building Committee, I am your liaison. Our meetings, I'm happy to say, are now hybrid. So you can attend via Zoom or in person. I really was pushing to make that happen. At our October 19th meeting, the committee heard from our OPM on pricing of the two school tracks that we're looking at, which is a new school and new site. And I want to make sure I say we were using renovate to new because that was the state term, but now it's alteration extension. And that was based on a conversation that the superintendent, our OPM and their chairperson had with the Office of School Construction. And based on the things that would need to be done at Hall School, they use the alteration extension description. So if you hear that new term and not renovate to new, it is slightly different. So the committee has been working to prepare for our first of several public presentations, only one is scheduled. I hope at our next meeting, we will, we will be scheduling the rest, which will be multiple. So we discuss with as many stakeholders as possible. And that first public forum is this Wednesday, November 9th at 7 o'clock at Hall School. It will be hybrid, so you can attend in person or on Zoom. So, and stop me if you have any questions about any of these items. Lot set, we're in the design, I'm sorry, the survey and design phase. We have a draft of the design plans that Mike D'Amato is working with the vendor on, preparing comments locally and then, you know, get input from our Public Works Director. And then those will go to CROD for review and then we will move forward from there. So we are, it seems slow, but we are moving in a forward direction. Our truck lease, we're still waiting, I've lost track of what month we're in. I was speaking with at least one CEO at CCM last week who ordered a truck from the same Ford vendor two months before we did. He's still waiting for his trucks, so I just keep pressing my fingers. We did hear that there were some trucks all in one area and maybe they're moving forward with them, but I don't know. So we will see, and this is the truck to replace the Public Works Director's vehicle. I will tell you that Troy's truck is hanging on by a thread. We thought we had some transmission issues and if that happens, I'm not sure, you know, what we'll do, but I'm not sure. It's in our best interest to put that much money into replacing that, but we will see. Of course.
Are we going to consider other options at this point? Like, if we're still months and months and months away from a truck and we have a truck that's going to fail theoretically any moment, are we going to consider another option or are we making it more likely? What's?
Well, the problem with other options, can I speak?
Of course.
That the price has gone up. The word right now will honor that price. So there was, there's no more, or what the price is has gone up with every dealership. And it's not just a few thousand dollars. So then it would have to be back to the border.
Okay.
That people would.
Used options, like are there, is this a pickup truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
The problem is when they use is they're just as expensive as the nutrients.
And we need a, we put a plow on, I don't suppose that would be necessary. It's certainly very helpful, especially with a small crew. It's something we get past. But if Ford were to come out and say, we're canceling your order, I think we look in a different direction, but we know right now all of those other directions come with more money. Yeah, and I have both been looking. I happen to be, you know, when I see a dealership with some trucks on the lot, I pull it and stop. Most of them are gas, we're looking at diesel and they're well over what we want. And then we'll be paying additional funds for gas because we have diesel in the garage, we don't have gas in it. So it just increases the price that much more, but what I'm looking at on lots aren't new trucks, they're used trucks. And still hoping that those prices will come down, right now it's probably just, so yes. I think we have an option for him to have a truck that would just be utilizing one that's in the garage right now. There are several towns in the same boat we are. And we've called other dealerships to say, hey, is there anything you can do when you get us something faster? And so we're annoying as many people as we can in the process, except for because we don't want them to say no. They did come out pretty quickly and canceled all, was it vans, transit?
Transit.
The transit vans. And they didn't do that for these vans, trucks, so, so we're hoping. But someday. ARPA Commission, the remainder of the funding, I don't remember if I said this at our last meeting, was received. I'm in the application portal was reopened until November 1st. We wanted to give everybody ample opportunity to submit kind of on a level playing field for the remainder of the funds. The commission met today and we discussed current projects and received multiple new projects. We have as many as six ready to go to public hearing, potentially eight. Two more that we've asked for them to come back with us, to us with some information on. So we're holding off on that public hearing, hoping that we can take them all at the same time. And so maybe in December for a public hearing. And just so you all know, we currently have requests for funds that exceed our allocation. So at this point, we know as a commission, we'll have to either partially approve or deny some because we couldn't fully approve every project that's before us because we don't have the funds. So that will be a conversation for, after public hearing. And so right now, the next ARPA meeting will be Monday, November 21st at 1:30. Town staff updates, I'm happy to report that we have hired a new payroll personnel coordinator. Her name is Stacy Hinkley. She is a Wellington resident and she will begin with us weekly today on Monday, the 14th. Katie Duval began on October 24th as the DPW Administrative Assistant. I welcome, want to welcome them both and look forward to their future with the town. We began interviews for the senior center coordinator position. We're looking to set up a second interview and hope to have that completed and have someone on staff in December. And we are still looking for a successful candidate for the Assistant Revenue Collector position. All right, Troy's reports.
All right, we've been grading the dirt roads. We serviced all the trucks and the plows, they doesn't snow. Roadside mowing is still going on. We've been blowing leaves off the roads. We've washed them, cleaned the shop. We had an eviction sale and I'm going to show you again. We passed holes around town, we put voting signs for the upcoming election. And we've moved some furniture and got some new desks in Yukon, moving around here at the town office building. Tree removal is still taking place around town. Mason Road, portion of Mason Road, we had a tree company come in and they took down approximately about 85 trees on that stretch. Landed around the garage. We picked up tires and trash on Mason Road for the Conservation Committee and cleaned up kind of basins. And that's what I have for an update. On this Wednesday, we'll be paving a portion of Village Hill. So we're going to p-toon down St. Muritz and to the museum. Right there. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be that, hopefully just for a few hours.
Just more cars, my dog's a park guy.
And then one more thing, I understand that the political parties go up to the transfer station. But there was one instance where someone was up there when the gates were closed. And the gates are open at 8:30 and it goes at 3:45. But we thankfully should be in there during those hours and.
And Troy's asked us, us to have a conversation at some point about, about that activity, right? It leads to a lot of cars, it's, it prevents, I think, you know, we've, we've all been part of that process. It leads to residents who are trying to do business at the transfer station for being able to do that. We're, you know, in the way, depending on how many people are there. So I, I think it's both a conversation for how we could better manage that bipartisan manner and still make the transfer station be able to run business that it is. So maybe in the coming months, we can have a conversation about that. And I just want to touch on, we heard it in present to speak. I was away and Troy and his staff conducted the new issuing of permits for the transfer station. This is not a new concept, they have done this in the past. And I know folks weren't happy, but I will say, Troy, correct me if I'm wrong, we turned away more than 20, more than 20 vehicles who are not residents of Wellington, who had been dumping at our transfer station. It is our duty to protect the tax dollars that every resident pays and, and be responsible in how we utilize those. And one of those is maintaining the transfer station. And we have an ordinance that speaks to the transfer station. And I just want to speak about section nine, which is access to the transfer station. Item C is all motor vehicles displaying a permit must be registered to a resident of the town and the operator or one occupant must be a resident of the town at the time of entry to the transfer station. So we could not say if your vehicle was registered, if we didn't have the information. There are lists we can get from the assessor's office that will speak to that. But asking folks for their registration to be sure the vehicle is registered, that we follow the process by our own ordinance that has not changed since twenty thirteen is important. There's also language that talks about how you have to have a permit. If one is failed to be displayed, you can't be permitted entry. If a representative of the town believes that refuse was generated outside the geographic limits of the town, such access and privileges may be denied. None of this was done to inconvenience residents. It was done so that we could make sure the permits that residents need were issued in a proper manner. It has been done before. I understand folks taking issue with it. Some folks didn't have registration and, you know, they were turned away. These are some of the roles of the transfer station, transfer station operator and the assistant transfer station operator. So again, the fact that we turned away, those are just the folks that came through that one week, whether it was Saturday, the Sunday or the following Wednesday. More than twenty people who identify themselves as regularly dumping in Wellington, who lived in Stafford, Coventry. Wellington, Mansfield. That says to me, we were a little bit lacking. So there's been conversation with staff. But you know, as we issue a new permit, just because I know your face, I know you Troy and I see you. And I see you every week. So I assume you live here. If it don't actually check, do we know that you live there? And so there was a little bit of an exercise in that. So while I understand folks were unhappy and there were many a phone call. This is something Troy has done over the course of his time here. And this year it was really, it was pretty sensitive to folks. And our intention is not to inconvenience people, but to protect a very needed resource and a very expensive resource. We don't pay additional dollars for the transfer station and we want to make sure that we're not paying for residents of all of our neighboring towns who have to pay to dump here. So while I know that folks weren't happy. We'll take a look at the ordinance and make sure we're holding it. So. Questions, Troy, if you want to add to that.
I have a question unrelated to that topic. So a lot of leaves on the ground. We're approaching theoretically, although it doesn't feel like it today, snow season. Town policies regarding moving leaves and snow from your property into the road. Can you remind us what those are?
Do not do that, please. Do not push your driveway out into the road, even if the plow driver has not hung down the road. Because if it freezes or what's, you know, then it's harder on our trucks. The guys hit it. It's not that the leaves, please pick your leaves up. We don't have a back system to suck leaves up here in town or anything like that. So we try with our boiler on one of our machines to try to, a certain house, especially where you are. There's a lot of leaves up there that the residents haven't picked their leaves up yet. It blocks catch basins and it does, once there's snow on there. We can't get to the curb, you know, to hit it. It clogs the basins and it creates drainage. So if you can kindly, you have a basin in front of your house, clean it off and make sure it's unblocked from leaves.
But your leaves in the snow do not.
Exactly, yes.
There's been a lot of leaves, not just in my neighborhood, but many places I'm driving. There's a lot of leaves across the road and not only does it block catch basins, it saves issues for kids riding bikes and all kinds of stuff. And somebody was.
No across the road anywhere.
Yes.
And it was private driveway period.
So we'll be sending out, unfortunately, because apparently winter's happening whether I want it to or not. Shortly the winter rules, which talk about what we can have in the road, what needs to be moved. If there's a parking van and specifically about blowing your snow.
Even basketball hoops. I know kids like to play out on the road, but they do, the mirrors come down the road and they hit and they drag them on. So the mirrors are expensive on the trucks. So if you can move your basketball hoop or on its back or to the town, we'd be greatly appreciative.
So, so the only other thing I would add is I, I, the town dump workers up there, they were just doing their job. I, I do appreciate their effort for doing what they're doing. That's a tough job to go ask for a little bit, hey, where you just take your, where's your paperwork? I don't know, maybe this other guy is getting given doing next time. I, I'm used to it because, you know, I, I've been always asked for, like, Phil, fish out something on the glove box for sticker. I mean, I would, I don't think I ever got a sticker here at the town office. I think I always ended up getting it at the transfer station. So that's just a tough situation. I think they handled it fairly well. At least they were very professional and I was there. I know.
Yeah. And I want you to know that I've said to them, I'm no different. And that they should ask me. I was asked for my bulky card in July, the first time I went to the dump, the same as any one of you would. And so they've been instructed that no one is different. Not me, not you, not you. You know, not Troy. Troy tries to come with his garbage. He would need to be stopped, right? Our staff knows he doesn't live in Wellington. So none of us are above any, any of these rules. And so we are having conversations with staff about how it went and what we can do moving forward. But the bottom line is we actually stop some people so we can keep prevent them from coming back if they don't have a sticker when they come back and it's a regular dump day. And, you know, staff needs to ask them for what they need. They still won't be able to provide it. And, and so we, we hope that that will tamp that down.
I believe it is a law that you're supposed to have your vehicle registered, registration in your vehicle.
And we're certainly not getting involved in the D M V side. They choose not to bring their vehicle. That, you know, that was on that. It's simply our, our ordinance states in order to use the transfer station, your vehicle has to be registered in the town of Wellington. And we do have certain criteria for business. So that falls in a different category and.
We're working on different stickers for a company vehicle or a business, but a lot of company vehicles won't have stickers put on there. You know, but as long as you have them, you can show them. And one more thing, if you don't have one, if you have a company vehicle and you come up there, the guys might ask you because that's they're doing their job. So it might be a hand in the butt for you. Show them your driver's license, make sure you're a resident of Wellington and you can dump your trash and there should be none.
That's right. There is also item D of that section, special exceptions may be requested in writing to the board of select. So we're not about hearing from folks, but these guys did their job and, you know, they, they took a lot of heat. I want to thank Kelsey. Who up on top of them spent most of Monday and probably Tuesday of that week fielding phone calls. And angry phone calls at that.
And I think I'm also, I think we're all aware too, that people get their cars fixed. Sometimes you need a loan, you get a loaner. And, and I know I've, I've been in that situation and you guys are pretty good about that too.
So thank you. Thank you all. All right. We are going to move on to or move to old business. The first item is a potential, potential ARPA project employee retention. You have in front of you, we talked about some of the things we could do in lieu of taking to town meeting. The bonuses proposal that we had put forth. And I plan to have a staff meeting with the election coming up. Things are pretty harried upstairs. So we'll get to that. But what you have in front of you is results from the survey. So we gave them, you see some items, we gave them the options choosing from, and then some free thought. And Kelsey, the ones that were handwritten by folks are those in here?
Yes, those in the bottom.
Okay. So, you know, there were, they run the gamut from, you know, having a coffee and tea bar with fixtures to gift cards. To a couple of days off of pay, a wild card day, a luncheon, lunch once a month. Filling our oil tank, home heating oil. You'll see on here, improving the physical plants, HVAC cleanliness, replace worn fixtures, improve the appearance of the building, paint the flooring. There are others that talk about paying a fair, market appropriate wage and treating employees well. Personally, I'd rather have more money in every paycheck than a one-time bonus. There are others that upheld the bonus. And you'll see the last item on the second page, that very clearly someone at least one person was in favor of the project as we put forward. And go on to speak about how the state gave employees twenty five hundred dollar COVID bonuses. There's a hero fund for essential workers, a premium pay program, which municipal government employees are not eligible for. So the state got funds they put out there, which is, I think we all were in agreement, we weren't trying to do anything that wasn't kind of the norm and still upholding that. So I'd like to still have a staff meeting with, with folks face to face and, you know, honestly, if they felt like they wanted us to move forward in the manner we were, then that's the direction we go. Is, is there anything additional you folks would like to see from this?
Um, so, I mean, this is a longstanding conversation, right? We've been talking about this since we started almost six or five years ago. So, I mean, there's an element that I agree does not belong in ARPA and that's the, like, doing a one-time bonus doesn't help with longevity and retention beyond those who are here right now or their folks. So there absolutely is a need to have the conversation ongoing about how we keep working to incrementally ensure that there's parity with the salary of Wellington employees and the salary of, you know, what they could get right next door in, you know, another similarly sized town. So so I think that's a conversation that we need to be continuing to evolve. And I think we've started to have those conversations as part of like the negotiation process for the contracts. So I think, yeah, going back to the conversation of what to use the ARPA funds for. I mean, clearly the, the bonus is that for gift cards are the preferred option. Second, being a party of sorts.
Right. I mean, so one comment read money is really the best way to reward your staff with their hard work. And for some of us, continued exposure, putting ourselves and our families at risk. So, you know, again, it is discouraging that there are state programs that are offering similar dollars and our staff is not eligible for them.
Yeah, see all state employees, although the state employees union.
Yes.
On CBAC. All state employees got, I think, two bonuses. A twenty five hundred and I think a one thousand. So this is not a new or the concept.
So my, my whole thing with ARPAs when they first started, it really should be the one time things you, you put in your town, like, like capital or projects and fix up kind of things. And it gets squishy when you start going into bonuses and things. And it's, it gets squishy because then you're going to have this, you know, public debate that you don't want to have, that you don't normally have in public about bonus system. And I, I do agree with Liza's comments that we should be paying people fairly and, and, and market rates and all that. But, and, but that being case, you need to be doing, making sure you're doing market work. If market work impairs you to be certified or, or, or have a certain level of education or or, or experience, then that's what you, you have to hold that. That is very critical and that must be maintained. You can't, so you, you know, you, you've been, if you're going to go and, and, and use a market wage and you have to have the market experience and the market training and the market certification, you have to follow, you've got to go all the way down that path, not just in a little bit.
I mean, all of the positions that require certification, all of our staff have or obtained within the required time period.
Right. Well, and that, and that, that he speaks, you need to be very strict about that. So.
I will say we are.
Okay, so, yeah, that's fine. But I, I, I have, I, I'm still struggling with the, with the bonus. I don't know. I, I need to.
I, I think, Jim, I, I just agree that it gets fishy because one of the the interim final rule, right, which is how we, we were to spend this money before the final came out. Very specifically has had a breakout for premium pay for the work that was done during COVID. It, it's, there are, there were four uses and one of them was premium pay. And so it was the ability to pay, but it excluded government employees. And so that there were other ways you could utilize the money and the state did that with, with their ARPA money, as did many other towns and cities. Just trying to, trying to recognize the work that was done. Our staff stayed on. There wasn't any additional work, but you know, they could have, we could have laid them off and they would have been eligible for lots of extra dollars from unemployment. They didn't do that. We didn't lay them off. I think this is what we're, what I'd originally proposed and we originally voted unanimous, unanimously on was no different than we know all state employees received. And many other municipal employees around the state and, and they can't, they can't take advantage of these other programs set up by the state. Yet did similar work. You know, they put themselves at risk. We all did. I, I would argue that every person who worked out there and came in contact with any other employee or vendor or customer, put themselves at risk and, and there's a certain sector that's being left out of this conversation. So I'm going to hold a staff meeting before our next meeting and come back to you with some different newer information and we can decide what we can do moving forward. But just take some time to take a look at what was on here that we could discuss. And if you have any more comments or anything else you think will be beneficial to ask in a survey, please reach out to Kelsey and we'll get that out to focus. All right, item B, our, our new assessor has been with us and sat patiently as we get to her item. We talked several months ago about the revow process. And so we are due for a revow in twenty twenty three. It happens every five years. When we did not have an assessor, I did fill out some information through O P M that allowed us to get in on special legislation, which is Special Act number twenty two dash six, which is an act authorizing a deferral property revaluations. In order to have that happen, you had to have said you wouldn't consider it. And so we are listed as a named town along with several others who had revow next year in twenty twenty three. We talked about how if we decided to go that route, it was important when our assessor came on board to have their input. And that this decision would have to go before a town meeting. That is what the statute says. So the act says, so with that, Kara Fishman is our new assessor and she's here with us to discuss her recommendation on, on revaluation next year.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say on this. I will say what there, there had been going through the piles that were on, I guess. There are a lot of things that have not been done that we've done before that happens and that's not to be updated. And I don't believe that all mapping changes, if they either, it has to be checked on whether or not they're edited on the map and the way it's driven your system. So, and then same thing with building permits. Building permits, while there have been some C O's that have, you know, been issued and people have gotten these sweaters. None of them have entered in this system for two years. So all of those have to be entered. Sales for the past year, in particular, I want to assess what we felt. You know, books happening the most, the one I found the most. They're not all in the system and I want to check them, make sure that they were done correctly. I mean, Rachel and Nicole did a really bang up job keeping that place going. There's just some things that just have to be done in order to make it a good database to work with. And as far as values, I don't, I don't know what the future holds, but I, I have not, I just looked quickly at what the the trends were over since they've been raising interest rates the past six months. There really hasn't been a notable difference. A lot of those might have been under, gone under. While interest rates feel lower and it may not be an issue in the sense of realtors pricing everything, well, they price it to sell. But there's a limited supply. Everything. So I think that is going to keep prices not, I don't believe they're going to go lower than inflation. I guarantee that, but so I don't think that the way I delay it a year will change in distribution of the effects. I think, I don't think this is going to be. I would not protest that we can't share.
Could, could the residential side see, simply because of where the market's been, see if we move forward now? see if we move forward now a significant increase that may be not real for lack of a better term, right? Simply because of the the state we've been in.
Yeah, so what the state does or requires us to do when you develop is look in particular months at twelve months prior sales. So whatever the sales were over the past twelve months, whether or not they've been affected by interest rates, they are still higher than they were in twenty seventeen. So um, I don't know what, you know, if that's gonna change a lot. I don't uh, yeah, every most, not even most, just that every town that had a revow, the twenty-one went up. Um, I know in Ashford, we did one and things went up, but um now there's twenty-five. And that was just what it was. So um, you know, I would expect something similar here.
Yeah, and and I think I I know I have, you know, mixed feelings about it because we think about our residents and how that would be a significant increase to them in this very toxic, turvy um financial place we're at, but significant increase in tax revenue for the town. But we're talking about a five-year essential.
Wait a minute, this is, uh, we have this this conversation all the time. This is just evaluation is the grandest, right? Now you're all the time. It's revenue neutral. Spending drives all taxes.
Yeah, so if you have.
Your house went from ten thousand dollars to a million dollars. Guess what? You pay a heck of a lot of this tax, but you're still gonna get the same amount of dollar value there. It doesn't matter. I'm just want, I I'm glad somebody's experienced looking at this to manage the vendor we're gonna hire, right? Because we hire a vendor to go through this revaluation. And 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 you're you're already giving your benefit of, hey, you gotta get the database screwed up and uh and aligned before you bring these people in here so you're not wasting money and all. I I mean, it's sounds like you're on the right, on the right track, so.
Yeah, I mean, hearing her say we need to hold off and it's in our best interest is, is, you know, something.
You can't waste our time. You can't waste time with a vendor, right? So get the databases cleaned up, fixed up and all that.
It doesn't change the five-year cycle. It just means we'll be.
We'll go to four years.
Four year from that, right? So Liza, you.
Yeah, I was momentarily very confused about your statement. I think because if like my house goes up a thousand percent, that increases my taxes.
The mill rate will go down.
If everybody's and everybody's gone out and still and the mill rate's gonna go down.
Can go down. Cause we, cause we can assess, like, right, like that's a thing, like that's set by the Board of Finance. That's not something that is an automatic trigger that happens and says, like, right now we have a mill rate, so we pay for the mill rate. So if my house increases a hundred thousand dollars in this revow, I pay that unless the Board of Finance sees.
The mill rate will be, will change. Revenue, but it will be less. It's it's a, it's a revenue neutral.
It should be.
Yeah, okay.
It's spending.
Well, in any of it, I just, I was just very confused for a second about what you were, what you were mentioning, because.
Or hurt somebody's when you buy. That's that's where it helps. Or borrowing against your home. That's that's.
I think borrowing against, because it's just one tool for um for for sales purposes. Right? So it's not, you're not only gonna be able to sell, sell based only solely on the assessment of your home.
Yeah, we should, right. It's a, it's a, it's a point in time, one year.
Right, because we know that the assessments were very low and homes sold very high within the last year, right? So.
Because the exact at one point in time.
That's right, that's right. So so it's only, it should not prevent folks from being able to sell higher. So I'm gonna make a motion and then we can discuss. So I'm gonna move that um we recommend. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move a recommendation to call a town meeting to defer the revaluation of real property for the assessment year commencing October one, twenty twenty-three until the assessment year commencing October one, twenty twenty-four, um provided such. Yes, there's a period.
A second.
We're just moving it one year. Okay.
We're moving it one year. Yes, and so we'll still be on the same twenty twenty, we were twenty twenty-three, so five years, twenty twenty-eight, we have stuff to do that.
Because we didn't have a last answer. Now we have one.
So you seconded it, it's a discussion. Um Kara and I have had this discussion. This is a vote that goes before town meeting. Not at this board. We may see this in one facet, our conversation and the advice of our um assessor. Our certified assessor who has great experience here and has seen um what she has to work with here in Wellington and what was left with us from the previous assessment, in recommending we hold off. And so we know that that vote could go either direction depending on who's in the room and know that we are that much farther behind the eight ball that we would typically have sent out a um RFP for this work in July. So we will be moving very quickly if the um town meeting vote results in something other than the recommendation of our assessor. So just keep that in mind that if the vote fails there, we'll be moving forward with it and certainly would be carried. So. Which means we will have another town. Right, any other discussion, Kara? Anything else you'd like to leave us with? Yeah, it's, you know, it it's clear that the um the most important thing is making sure that the work that was done up there is captured within the system. And so while we're maintaining some of that work, being able to get it all in the database and up to date hadn't been neglected and and not just in the time that um Walter was gone and in the time Walter's left here with us. So I think that's worse. No. Yeah, it's discouraging and once she's, she's in those weeds. Um, so I appreciate your work on this, Kara. All right, seeing no other discussions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. All right. You don't have to say what you want to say. We will not be offended if you. Um, all right, we're gonna move on to tax refunds. Okay. I'm gonna start with that. I'm gonna move to refund Daimler Trust an overpayment in the amount, excuse me, um in the amount of one hundred eighty-two dollars. Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I will move to refund Jeremy Angle an overpayment in the amount of eight hundred seven dollars sixty-three cents.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll move to refund Jacob Kirk an overpayment in the amount of two hundred eighty-four dollars nine cents.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move to refund Archangel or Catherine McCall a certificate of correction in the amount of ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to refund Linda Minor an overpayment in the amount of ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move to refund Daphne Myers an overpayment in the amount of one hundred twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move to refund Linda Shane an overpayment in the amount of one hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What the record shows, this board has been joined up. It's paying its toll with this. I'll move to refund Jefferson Smith an overpayment in the amount of seven hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Second, seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move to refund Helen or Lawrence Tangeri an overpayment in the amount of twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Oh, Kelsey will, oh, Jim seconded. All those in, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move to refund Vault Trust a certificate of correction in the amount of four hundred nineteen dollars and eight cents. Second, seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next item of business, appointments. So there are times we can't fill positions and there's times we have an abundance of folks. So what we have before us are uh three folks who would like to be considered for an alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. If there's something good um that came out of uh the extensive hearings that uh came before us was a renewed interest in some of our boards and commissions. So first, I want to thank everyone who uh put their names forward. So you have um a request from James Marshall, a request from uh Bill Benau, and um so you see several letters of uh support for Bill from the um Democratic Town Committee as well as individual residents. You'll also see um a recommendation behalf of the Wellington Republican Town Committee for Michael Johansson. Is that you, Mike?
Right.
Um, and so we um now find ourselves with three folks for two positions. I would um if the board so agrees, like to give each of the three of them the opportunity um to share anything with us that we don't have in front of us in some of these letters of recommendation um as we move to consider appointments. We both agree. Right, so I'm gonna go alphabetical order. Um, and so I will start with Mr. Benau.
Hi, I'm Bill Benau, well, Red Oak Hill Road. Um, I think I've covered most of what's really pertinent in my letter, being in town for a while and and being um publicly oriented for publichood. Um, I really was impressed by the uh the intensity of the town and the reaction to this, this year's large warehouse project. And I could see that there was quite a bit of I don't know if you could read it as stress, but there was a lot of, you know, the the board basically just has to take in all of this information and try to process it in a, a very neutral basis. And I thought that that was something that would probably be better if you could spread it out amongst more people. So that's why I wanted to volunteer for it. Um, I don't bring a lot of knowledge about planning and zoning, but I do have considerable knowledge about construction and about um the environment and so forth. So I think I could um be a good candidate to help interpret the information necessary to make these, these calls. Uh, I would definitely want to come on as an alternate before I ever thought of trying to be part of the board because I feel that there is somewhat of a learning curve. Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, questions or comments? We can wait till they end or now, whichever, anyone? All right, I guess next, um I alphabetical order brings us to Mr. Johansson.
Name, Johansson, thirty-seven old South Wellington Road. Been a Wellington resident for fifteen years. I grew up in Ashford, just right across the way. So I've lived in small towns for like forty years. Uh, I own a construction company here in town, and I've been in business for seventeen years. I'm very well versed in a lot of the situations in dealing with zoning in the residential side. Um, I'm a big advocate for people of prumby foundations and the crockery route vendor. Um, participate wherever I can, you know, just with homeowners around town, just being part of the community and doing what I can do. Would love to learn more about planning and zoning. I've taken an interest over the past couple of years. I've had.
Um, don't worry, it's not a sign.
Please, if you didn't talk with our hands and mouth, yeah.
I've had family members that were actually on planning and zoning and I've taken an interest in speaking with them years ago, even before I was a resident at the once and just kind of learning ins and outs and town stuff and what would be better for the future of the town. As somebody of my age and seeing what's gonna happen over the next decades and where the town's heading, I think I bring a different point of view. And uh, different experiences that I can offer and opinions that I think could benefit the future of the town.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, Mr. Marshall is online with us. Mr. Marshall, would you like to share anything?
Certainly. Hi, thanks, everybody. Um, uh, once again, I I I thank you for your consideration uh for this appointment as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, as I mentioned before, you guys are somewhat familiar with me because I've been pretty active um in the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings um and other town um boards and commissions. I've been very engaged um since more recently when I understood um, you know, how important. Um, it's a little tough moving to town during the pandemic, right? So I did that. I moved here with my family. Um, I have, and we hope to never leave because we've fallen in love here since we um since we became uh residents um at the start of the pandemic. But, you know, I've I've come to understand the importance of um being active and engaged, particularly in a small community. Um, I have been um, you know, very um active and persistent in um trying to raise awareness um for the residents of the community about active um planning and zoning issues because they greatly, can greatly impact um you know, the lives of um both themselves and their other relatives in the in the community. Um, I am an architect by trade. Um, I come at it from that perspective and I believe it's a unique perspective um that has not currently served on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I have presented and have an understanding of how um projects are presented, um, you know, to planning and zoning. Um, but also how developers can take advantage of zoning ordinances and um, you know, regulations that allow too much flexibility. Um, and to that point, I've been very active in trying to um work on behalf um and in, you know, discussion with residents of the town to work to um provide input to regulations. I have an act, I had an active application that was open in public hearing before the town uh recently trying to work to rectify um, you know, some of the faults that allowed the more recent um planning and zoning applications um for the mega warehouse uh to be you know, brought before the commission. Um, I believe in sensible and balanced development, but also development that is in line with what this community wants and not necessarily what outside interests want. Um, my perspective is I don't see this as, but my experience has not been that planning and zoning is a political um role. I I know I'm the only person here that's not um endorsed by a political party currently. Um but that's been my experience. You know, I'm present, as presenting an application for the commission. Um, I don't see it as political. I see it as, it should be neutral. It should be what's in the best interest of this community. Um, and you know, that's what I've advocated for both publicly and at these meetings um is a fair interpretation of the regulations that serve the interests of the town um and not the interest of particular projects. So I would bring that experience. Um, and again, I do hope, I know um being an alternate allows you to learn from the commission. I feel just being present, I've learned quite a bit from the commission over the past many months, but um I also know, you know, being on the commission, there's so much more to go. So I, this is something I have a passion about and serving the community. And um, you know, I really hope to learn as much as I can so that I can hopefully serve this in a more formal um and long-term capacity down the road. So thank you very much for your consideration, guys. I appreciate it.
Right, so at this point, um if any board members had any questions or comments? Um, if not, um I do have two. Um, I don't know, Chelsea provided into, I do have two uh proposed motions there, namely, etc. Um, and then the term information is what's been given to us by the um town clerk's office, when we make sure we put correct term information. So I don't think you have that in your packet, but if either of you would like to make a motion, I'd be happy to share. The draft um motion. If you have any comments.
I don't have any comments or concerns at this time.
Anyone looking to make a motion?
Um, I would like to make a motion.
Where's the first one that we filled, Eddie? You can fill in XX act, your candidate of choice.
Okay, got it. Uh, I move to point, point, uh, Michael Johansson as alternate for Planning and Zoning Commission member to fill a vacancy effective November eighth, twenty twenty-two, expiring December third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second, all right, discussion. So this is um a one-year appointment. The alternates do, uh they are all appointed by um the Board of Selectmen and they're staggered. So there's a current member and. The Board of Selectmen and they're staggered. So there's a current member and then this one, and so you'll see different expiring terms. So a year from now, this particular appointment would come back before us.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Because is the other one is longer?
It is. It's twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so I think that's a question for those running, because if you're planning on. Like, is there a preference for whether you want the one-year appointment or the two-year appointment?
No.
Because if you're planning on running for the full board position.
Right.
In a couple of years.
Yeah, she's gonna go campaigning next year.
So, right, if they chose to be on a municipal ballot next year, then what would happen is they would then, and, and if they weren't a successful candidate, then they would. They vacate and they're all going to be back to somebody appointed again.
The board at that time. Got it, okay. So I guess it doesn't matter to.
The, the good thing was all three nodded in the affirmative. They were willing to fill whatever term. Came before them. So that's good news. Alright, so there has been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote.
Liza?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Erica?
I.
Motion carries. I will move to appoint Bill Benau as alter, alternate planning and zoning commission member to fill a vacancy effective November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Expiring December third, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second by Liza, discussion. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Kelsey, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Liza?
Hi.
Jim?
No.
Erica?
I.
Motion carries. Again, we find ourselves in the. Bountiful but unfortunate position where we have more candidates than we have positions for this particular board. Which means we're in a position to not choose someone I feel is qualified. I, I often, I say all the time, I want more people in the room. I'm happy to see lots of people fill this meeting. And most people step forward to serve our community. And, and so I want to thank you all and your lack of appointment here. Should not dissuade you from finding a way in which to serve Wellington. I think everyone brings something to the table that's valuable.
I think all candidates were highly qualified.
Absolutely. Everyone brought something to take to the table. We had.
A unique, very unique perspective.
Yes, we have two candidates and, and three of the positions. So I think. I, I think it's, you know, again, a blessing.
It's almost like you should buy a marble. We're, we're pretty lucky here.
Yes, so, alright, seeing that, I want to thank you all. It will not be offended if you do not choose to stay with it through the rest of the meeting. But you'll receive communication from the Selectmen's Office under the Town Clerk's office as for the next steps in your appointment. So thank you.
The next step is to see their.
They'll get a communication from my office. Yeah, like I said, okay. So we'll move to item C, resolution for the twenty twenty-two Homeland Security Grant Program. This is an annual program that covers the salary of our emergency management director. And it requires us to. Put forth a resolution. And so I will move, resolve that the Wellington Board of Selectmen. May enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security at any, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolve that Erica G. Waschinsky, as first select woman of the Town of Wellington, is authorized and directed to execute. And deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Wellington Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he, she. Or she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. Is there a second?
Second?
Discussion. This is the, it's a six thousand dollar grant, no, yes, six hundred dollar grant. These are the grant funds that pay for our senior management director. Any other discussion? Alright, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries. The next item, this is a very exciting one. You have before you the proposed holiday schedule for. The twenty twenty-three calendar year. You'll see, it begins New Year's Day twenty twenty-three and ends with New Year's Day twenty twenty-four. We've already approved New Year's Day twenty twenty-three as Monday, January second, and that follows our CBA, which has Sunday holidays being. Observed on Monday. Saturday holiday would be observed on a Friday. These are all contract, by contract. Holidays. You recall in our la, our latest CBA, Juneteenth was added to, you'll see Monday, June eighteenth as Juneteenth. And Selectmen, we have Selectmen's Day, so that's a day we choose. I have scoured the calendar and proposed, this is a proposal, certainly there could be discussion here. Proposed Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as Selectmen's Day. This year, Selectmen's Day was on a day in August. That is the time. When we're closing the previous fiscal year, we've already begun the new fiscal year. I had some concerns about it and spoke with our business manager. Who echoed those same sentiments. That's a very difficult time of year for her office. So while I think it's important to recognize, we say. We don't want to put any undue stress on our staff if we can avoid it. And so she recommended a time other. Than a mid-August date.
I mean, usually we do around a holiday.
If you got a Tuesday or Thursday holiday, that's, that's what Selectmen's Day is.
Yeah, so.
Like we're celebrating.
No, it's not about us. It's, it's us giving a day to staff. That's all. It's, it's, it's more about that. That us. So this is the proposal.
We call it a floating holiday, right? Or every, every other place I go.
Yes. And this is a traditional day. I will note that it's not a day that either, any of the three of us came up with it was already. A contracted day. Long prior to us, a longstanding tradition. I know there was some concern by some residents that we were just getting out holidays. But this is contracting.
Honoring ourselves.
Honoring ourselves. No, this is really us giving back and, and someone long before us needs Selectmen's Day. So I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three holiday schedule if you so choose. Or if you feel like we need more time to discuss.
One second.
I didn't know.
I would entertain a. Oh, sorry. I move to accept the proposed. Holiday schedule for the twenty twenty-three year.
I'll second that.
Motion by Liza, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
The next item is a draft proposal of our regular meetings for the twenty twenty-three year. Again, the first two, every year we start with the January meetings and we approve them. So that in the event there's a delay in, in the approval of our regular meetings, we can begin the year with the regular scheduled meeting. I will note two, four, six, there are seven Tuesday Board of Selectmen meetings in this calendar. The way the holidays fall. So many of those days are days off on Mondays and that pushes everything to Tuesdays.
The only, the only one I'm wondering about, July third.
You know what, Jim? I thought that too, so.
Because I'm thinking like, I'm probably gonna be away for a long week, right?
So here's my take on that. If we needed a regular meeting, we could hold it. If we get to May and June and say, no one's going to be around, we can cancel a regular meeting. But I think setting it as a regular meeting, otherwise we're kind of picking a random date. The holiday is on the Tuesday. So then we're really, you know, getting kind of off of our first and third Mondays except for holidays. And I, I think this is one of the years where we may just see. July, there is probably not the best date to hold a meeting where not only the board may be available, but the community. But if we leave it on there, we can cancel. At least it's the ability to cancel. Oh. So, yeah, it's easier to cancel it as to schedule.
I'm only, I'm only making it, I'm just making an observation.
My guess is many in town will observe. Or try to. So I would entertain a motion. On the calendar, unless we believe there's, we want to have more discussions.
We'll make the motion to accept the Board's Selectmen Meeting Schedule for twenty twenty-three, as good.
Also, Jim, second? Any discussion?
My only question is, in previous years, we've had, we've often had one summer meeting that we've canceled. Have we done that ahead of time or that's like as?
Yeah. I mean, if you post it your calendar summer, then we see, look, everyone's away. It doesn't work. I know the previous or prior to our term, Liza, they tended to step away from an August meeting. I think it was based on the availability of the. So I haven't, and, and so, you know, we try to hold them, especially if we have important business and then sometimes. So again, easier to cancel a, a regular meeting than to schedule a special one. Any further discussion?
No.
Right, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 There is. The one calendar you don't see before you is the ever-popular budget calendar. So if you could both get some. Availability, dates and times.
It works.
To Kelsey, it's, it's going to be tough to get us all together, but valuable and important. So if you can get your availability or off meeting times to Kelsey, we will work on that for our next meeting. Alright, moving on, item. Item app is awarding a vendor for a DPW generator. This is ARPA six. This is an ARPA project that was approved at ARPA's in the second tranche of funding. And this is for a generator at the Public Works Garage. The current generator is, do we know how old it is?
Probably twenty-five years.
Twenty-hundred, thirty years is the number we've seen. It requires lots of pampering in order to work and it runs our fuel. So in the event we have a power outage, someone from Public Works has to go out to the garage and restart the generator. So that buses, fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera, can get fuel. And so our funds came along. This is a, a great time for us to move to putting in a new generator. It will tell you we have a budget of sixty-nine thousand dollars allocated. You'll see before you, Troy has three quotes. The first one from CNT Electric for a total of seventy-nine. Thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars. One from D'Amico Electric at forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. And tower generator. In the total amount of forty-seven thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Okay, so the one that is like almost double, is there any significant difference? I guess, is there any difference in any of the proposals in terms of the work that they would be, they're supposed to do or the investment there?
No, the only thing is, is a tower generator is fifty thousand KW and the other two are sixty thousand KW. Tower generator came in and it did like a, like a study almost on how much wattage everything would take. And a fifty would be more than efficient than the sixty.
And Troy, this is so that power goes on, generator goes on.
Yeah, within thirty seconds, fifteen seconds.
So they're, they're all propane generators?
They're all propane generators, yeah.
So getting one size that's exactly, you'd need like fifty instead of a sixty will burn less propane.
Right, exactly, yeah. And they're, that's exactly. The other two just did sixty KWs. It was, you know, I kind of threw that number out there, you know, something like that, whatever. And then when tower generator came, they actually took, they wanted our usage from EverSource. They did more, and they came through and did it. And he said the fifty would be more than enough for what we would ever use.
So I have zero experience with tower generator. I can tell you, I know there. We've come recommended, I've heard lots of folks use them. I, I know nothing. I, I feel confident that all three are qualified vendors that we've done work with. Troy, can I ask what your recommendation is?
I would recommend that tower generator.
Now, I will move to award the Wellington, Town of Wellington DPW generator purchase and installation. The tower generator in the amount of forty-seven thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars. Second by Jim, any discussion?
Just in a quick comparison between tower and D'Amico. The D'Amico is just a little bit less.
Just a little bit, yes. And I couldn't get, Al couldn't give me an updated quote on what it was. The other two were updated in courses. Another week, I called last week and what messages and stuffers.
And what concerns me is that that's from March, March.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I, I'm just looking at it from the wattage, right? So the bigger the generator, the more fuel it brings.
Yes.
You know, and then if you can just stretch it out a little bit longer because you got away from the truck to get through. The down trees or whatever to come to top us off, I mean, makes sense.
Yeah, and my guess is.
And anyway, you said that you, you recommended it.
If, if we, if we had a, a new quote from, from Al, and, and I know like most vendors. They are fried out, right? They're struggling for staff and they, they are busy, so I can understand why that wouldn't happen. But my guess is it would probably be higher now. So I will be happy to say that, you know, if we vote. In favor of this particular award and pricing stays exactly where expected to. We will be returning about twenty thousand dollars, so we'd be right in line with almost every other project. We've been able to return funds and stayed under budget. At ARPA, so which will allow for more dollars to other projects. Okay, see, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carries. Alright, Troy, you got a couple more here. The next is for awarding a vendor for a DPW storage box for evictions. This is ARPA Project Thirty-four. As you know, we are required by statute. And there is an eviction to take into possession from the marshal, the belongings. Hold them until such time as they're either, they have a defined time, it's fifteen days. To be retrieved by the owner and after that time, we are allowed to pull the, a public auction. It can be an extreme expense for some towns and cities. It's been ongoing discussion. And for us, it's a matter of where do we keep these items? And not knowing the condition, we've, we've had to date. Items that have been outside, which we had to take possession of, and the only place we had to store them without. Incurring a cost. In some towns, we use storage facilities, and so they incur a cost, is the DPW garage. And so Troy went to ARPA asking for a storage container. In, in which to use for this. If, if we don't use, if we don't have an eviction, we have the ability to store some other. So you see before you two quotes, one from Aaron Supreme Containers. We do not have a third vendor. And one from Eagle Leasing. Eagle Leasing with the delivery charge worked out to be fifty-seven hundred dollars. And Aaron Supreme Containers works out to be fifty-five, twenty-five with the delivery. So that's the twenty-foot container, new one trip. Troy, what's the difference between the wind, water type? Those are used.
Those are used, yeah.
And you said, you said they used container.
Well, it's a top two.
The new one.
That's, I mean, they've become, they're rough. He said that, they are.
You mean like transfer station, rough?
Yeah, they're, exactly. You know, I mean, they're still, you know, they're watertight, but it's still, they don't, you know, they're used. They've been shipped across and drowned.
So there's a slight, less than two hundred dollar difference between the two of them, and your recommendation is?
The, the Aaron Supreme. We, we purchased the one that we have last year, the year before.
And you're recommending.
I would no recommend a new one.
You, you recommended a one? Any particular reason why, or, or rough is rough?
Just rough is rough, and that's, yes, yeah. Just rough is rough, and that's, yes, yeah, and if we're holding somebody's belongings, so it's, if somebody did go up there and try to. Fry or do something, it's, it has some moisture or whatnot, the new one, we have a new one at the garage, it's, it's when you close the doors, the seals are everything.
Our statutory obligation. Besides, um, holding their, is to protect them, we, we are responsible for them, so, um.
Now, we don't want things leaking on it.
No.
Something that was carrying acid or waste.
Knowing what was in it, so.
We want to know what was in there.
I will move to award the Town of Wellington DPW Storage Box Purchase and Delivery to Aaron Supreme Containers in the amount of. Five thousand five hundred twenty five dollars. Second by Liza, once again, I'm happy to say, if this is a positive, uh, vote, then we would be under budget. Again, not as much slack, but still under budget by just less than a thousand dollars. We like under budget. Right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Motion carries. Right, for those of you who've been sitting through these very important items, we're getting closer. All right, item H, uh, Schofield Road Drainage and Engineering Discussion. So this is a CIP item. Um, uh, it was a, a project that has been on CIP for over thirty years. And I say over because you don't know the exact amount, when I came on board, the last, um. The forms we use for CIP, uh, tell you to put the date in which it was first requested, and this is one of those roads that just says the ninth. Um, and so, engineering for this project was approved in the twenty twenty two, twenty three CIP plan for thirty five thousand dollars. So, uh, as Troy went out and began discussing this project first with our town engineer. Um, who indicated it was a larger project than, uh, he was willing to undertake, recommended, um, when we seek out, uh, firm. So Troy began to, um, talk with professionals in the industry to get a sense of the scope of work. Uh, it became clear that the project was larger than anticipated, and the budget for engineering was not nearly enough. Um, the, the numbers that were bandied about around for engineering were in the one to two hundred thousand dollar range. Um, and again, those were very rough estimates, so what you have before you is, is, um. Uh, a request for a quote proposal from Beta, and they are a state-approved contractor. That would develop conceptual design plans and construction cost options. So this would be used to allow us to budget for the entire project with current pricing. Um, and that would include the engineering costs, so we know what those costs were. So this is really phase one, um, of this project, and we'd be looking for grant opportunities to offset the project. So this would be phase one, a phase two would be the actual engineering, and then phase three, the project. So, um, you can see from this proposal, this would include data collection, uh, and base mapping. Of the area along, uh, Schofield Road, a conceptual design. Uh, that would have reconstruction plans, um, and profiles. It would have, uh, rights of way, they begin to work on, on the different rights of way that would be needed along the stretch of Schofield Road. Uh, an opinion on the cost, and then coordination and funding assistance, or what we didn't, we spoke with them is, um. Talk about some different avenues where we could, um, potentially seek funding, um, and they would. Inquire with Prague, our, um, to the Capital Region Council of Government on possibilities of, um. Seeking a reclassification of that road that could potentially make it eligible for lots of. So Lots of is the program that we used along Route Thirty Two to do that sidewalk project. Um, and they feel strongly that this road, uh, may be able to be reclassified, certainly because of the amount of traffic. Um, and the type of traffic that comes, um, as a cut through from the Stafford area. And that all would, um, be provided to us for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Again, this is not engineering cost, is what, um, give us. The cost that we need, and this is a large project, which is why it continually, year after year, gets pushed off. I will tell you, Jim, probably your time on the Board of Finance, um, in the same as my time here. The number three hundred fifty thousand has been the number that's used because no one has enough dated costs. I will tell you in beginning discussions with professionals, um, Troy and I were, um, given numbers that were in the two million dollar range. Um, so startling to say the least, so it became clear that thirty five thousand was not enough for the engineering. And we need to know the entire scope of work to really be able to plan on CIP for real cost, so that we could make some real efforts. Um, and I think there's some real grant opportunities out there right now to help, uh, in assisting the town with, uh, this very long overdue project. There's a couple of things right now, the trip grant program, which we're looking at to see again that, um. It requires that grant to change the classification of roads to be eligible, and so we could get some of that for some of this work. Um, but, our, uh, uh, recommendation using the initial, um, set aside costs for this particular item. Anything I left out?
So, so what is Beta providing? They're providing a. Rough order of magnitude proposal, is that what they're, they're doing?
Basically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Here's.
Complex enough, we need to.
Yeah, because the water coming down Schofield, it goes into the state property, so the state has to be involved, it's not like we have a chunk of land where we can spit the water. So there's more steps and procedures that you got there.
And we've heard Carl say for many years. One of the biggest, um. Problems with this project and moving forward is where will the water go? Where are we going to put the water? So that involves us working with the state, because as the water comes down, there's no way for it to avoid. Going across thirty two in some capacity, so, um, and, and. The drainage in some of these areas that I'm not sure how familiar some of you are, we have rights of way that go around some homes. DPW goes in and cleans out right around someone's backyard. On a pretty small parcel of land, uh, because the water flows around their house. For lack of, uh, a better place for it to go. Concerning, absolutely, um, there's little to no drainage in the pitch of that hill, certainly it's challenging, it's not the, it's not the entire. Stretch of Schofield Road.
Will, will we go up to the top?
To the top of the hill, doesn't go all the way to the. Um, it's, it's the bulk of the hill, but it is a much larger, um. Budgeted project than I think we knew, and this is going to give us real numbers, so we can do some real planning. We talked at CIP about putting it in a potential bonding package, but boy, I would hate to see us go that far out with three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Find out we need two million dollars. Um, that would be very irresponsible, so we're going to have to spend some money to find out, um, what the real cost here is. So I, I'm going to make a motion to award Beta Group, uh, ink the contract for a concept plan and opinion of cost development. For Schofield Road Drainage Project, an amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion?
Oh, I, I remember when we did Turn Back Road, it was a lot of. Proposals by the state plan, and then we said, hey, you know. Use something called meat goffs, right? It's a fair amount of money there, I, I, I don't think that, I don't know what will work here or not. We should be out of lookout for things like that, right? Because the same thing with Ulster. Ulster Road, and there's at least a couple, there's a bridge there, right, the state said, uh, you know, a couple million dollars, we could. You can, we can build your bridge, you know, we, we went in for a lot less. So, though I appreciate that using state standards, and you might have to, um, um. Somebody's water things, I think they should get a look out for other ways to help.
And for, you know, getting that, this, um, you know, will give us an idea of what just the engineering will cost, because clearly. We determined what we thought was an appropriate amount of money, um, based on, um. Similar projects in the range we were looking at in CIP, and, and if these costs hold up, we are so far. Uh, out of the ballpark, it's not even funny, and I will tell you that Beta's estimated schedule is, um. That within two weeks of receiving a notice proceed, if we move in that direction, uh, they would begin, and then they're looking at about sixty days. Um, from there to have a project completed, so really not in time for a full, um, CIP, but we'll start to be putting some numbers in CIP. Um, and see if we can get so, so it's on the radar, because it's not going to be a one-year project.
If you use these guys before. Yep, actually, a couple of things, they're doing the MS four mapping for. The stormwater, and they did the asphalt management, okay.
Those are both, um, in process, they expect to have the, uh, the asphalt management.
In the next, yeah.
Yeah, we're hoping by our next meeting, they'll have a presentation to us. Um, so, hold on to your seats. As they're coming, but they are, um, they're, uh, are Craig approved vendors, so we need to get back on a cross contracted and sold.
Troy used them, he's happy with them.
We're using them.
Being responsive to your questions.
But there are. You know, that's what I'm saying, that's how Troy's using now, is through Prague, apparently, we just recently approved on these two projects.
Okay, yeah, that's worth it. I've seen this.
Yes.
Low going the last couple months.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
I motion carries. Okay, um, last item of new business is the future use of existing schools, um, discussion. So as you know, the school building committee is, uh, moving forward, looking at how, uh. Uh, two projects, two tracks, to bring, um, eventually to a referendum in one project, and that is currently, uh. A new school on a new site, or, um, again, I want to make sure I get the term right, because it's different, the alteration extension of Hall School. So both, um, of those play. Center School no longer being used as a school, again, only in the event of a positive, um, referendum. Um, by the school builders, okay, so these are, we, we don't know if this will happen, but the, the plan, so the plan would be to. At this point, no longer use center as a school, and if, um, if Hall School is, uh. Reused, we'd have just one, that one building to look at, if, um, a new school on new site was chosen, then we would have two schools. That would no longer be used, um, and so the school building committee's charge was to identify potential future uses. They have, um, moved forward, or we have, I will say, by that committee, um, to ask the, uh, selectmen. Um, to seek some clarification from us, or give them clarification in the event. That the existing Hall School and Center School are vacated as a result of a new consolidated school on a new site, what is the town's intent? For future use of Center School and Hall School? And number two, in the event of the existing Hall School is renovated, altered as a result. Of a new consolidated school, what is the town's intent for the future use of Center School? So. I, I'll start with some brief comment, I believe this is a larger conversation than just one meeting, it needs to include many stakeholders. Um, and if you recall last year, I submitted a CIP, uh, project for a town facility study, in the event we had a successful school building project. Um, and, and I believe we need concrete answers to these questions, but don't believe in order for the SBC to move forward. Um, you know, we need to answer them quickly, again, I think it's a larger discussion than the three of us, and with that, I will stop talking.
Uh, well, the SBC, one of the things that you have to figure out is what the cost options are. It's a certain. Implication that, you know, if you're going to consolidate down to one building, you know. You still have a disposal or something to do with the other, either reuse it or dispose it. If you, and, and both of them have a cost, one's an ongoing cost and one's a, a short-term cost. And I think both of those should be considered, I mean, I, I don't think we would just take the Hall School and just. Say, okay, it's a whole foundation, there you go, it's back, I mean, you might have to do something like that. Um, pull out tanks, uh, maybe there's some level of demolition, I, I, I don't know.
Last one question about the Hall School, because. I was under the impression that it goes, it reveres back to the foundation, if it's no longer used as a school. So is that even something we have? Jurisdiction over, um, to make a decision about how it will be used, since if we decide not to use it as a Hall School, our current. Agreement with the foundation is it goes back to them.
I think it's important that we engage in conversation with them, and there's been some, uh, limited conversation with, uh, the school building committee, and, um, I. Peter, correct me if my memory fails, there was some discussion about there being potential interest in discussing adjusting the deed language.
Some discussion.
Yes, right, so limited in scope.
I'm concerned, just listening to.
Yeah.
Direction like we realize it, at the present time, it would revert back as that. With all foundation.
We could engage in conversation, but until such time as the deed changed, um, nothing would change, right, so, um, and, and. What the school building committee's charge is, is to, um. Have a project of a consolidated pre-kim through eight school, and identify potential future uses. So, a, a referendum for the school, unless we knew we were demoing one because we needed the cider to a part of the project cost. That would not typically be on the referendum question, the referendum question would be specifically about the project that you were going to the. Um, OSCGI, the Office of School Construction and Grants, or, um, as, as far as reimbursement, um, grants for the school. So, from the town perspective, it has to be part of our greater conversation, but, um. You know, we wouldn't know what cost we had until such time as we knew what our usage was, and we have this. Um, oddity with Hall School, is that we own it, we own it outright until such time as we don't use it as a school, and so then that ownership. Begins a new conversation, and, and what do we want to see done with Center School? Listen, there's plenty of folks who will say you should use that as a town hall, you should sell it and, and. Use it for residential property, you could use it and expand, uh, your fire department, it's next door. That's a larger conversation that needs to be taken into account, because if we abandon any of those other buildings. There would be a cost incurred to the building that, that would move into there, so that's why I suggested, uh, uh. Townwide facility study, um, to determine what those additional costs would be. But either way, if one of these projects is successful, we know Center School will no longer be used as a school, so we know we have to identify that. We have two fire departments that are both asking for funding for, um, either renovation or a brand-new build. Those are large costs that will be incurred, and so we need to take a look at our town facilities and needs as a whole. Um, to decide, which is why I say if this is a larger conversation than we could ever, um, have and, and decide on in one meeting.
Right, and, and I wouldn't want it to end up like the witch school was in Stafford, just a big abandoned.
No.
Thing down there.
Yeah. And sadly, Jim, I, I, I think we want to try to avoid that, and I think it happens in more towns than ever expected to. Right, I think, you know, I, I'm not sure Mansfield is in the middle of their discussions, they had three schools, they were abandoning. To build the one consolidated school, their plan to build a new school included demolishing. Um, Southeast School, which was on the property of the new school, so they already knew what to do with that one. They embarked after they had a successful recommendation, uh, I'm sorry, referendum, embarked on a facility study for the remainder of the schools. And town facilities, including their town hall, and so they're just, uh, their school is set to open hopefully, uh, the beginning of the, the new year. And they're just beginning the discussions on what to do with the remainder of their buildings, so. Um, it, it's a, a bigger conversation, and, and I think one that warrants, uh, facility study, and we won't have an answer. Um, as the school building committee moves forward. In my, in my mind. But, you know, where do we go from here, um, to start these discussions, do we? Um, bring some more folks to the table and can brainstorm what they could be used for? You know, residents are going to be asking us what the, the cost implication is. Um, but until we identify use, I don't know that we can give them a cost, an estimation.
Well, I, I think there's probably. I think idea generation is where we have to start, so, um. And that can come from the residents, it's like. You know, we can, like we did when we started the school, um, conversation a decade ago. Start having community conversations about what to do with the, um, buildings that would be the building or buildings that would be, um. Empty and no longer being used to schools, so for me, that feels like sort of the first place to start. Um, is to just get some ideas. Generally, and then as we approach and know more about what's happening and which direction we're going, um. Like, I wouldn't want to spend money on it until we know which direction we're going. You know what I mean? Like, I wouldn't want to hire somebody for a facility study if. We haven't had really a. If we, if we have, if we're still in a place of ambiguity about, are we, is this even happening? Are we building a new building, are we consolidating into one existing building? I mean, I think until we have a little more. Certainty, it doesn't make sense to spend money on any kind of facility study.
So my CIP plan, which was submitted last year, which you'll see again, um, hopefully in our next meeting in, in the CIP projects. Um, to be submitted this year, you'll see me submit that project again, again, it would be in the next fiscal. Again, it would be in the next fiscal year. So the um, anticipated timeframe from SBC is somewhere around March to hold the referendum. So by the time we got to a new um, fiscal year and, and new potential funding, we would have an answer. It's A, B, or none of the above.
Yeah.
Right? Because there's always the risk that, that, you know, the, the committee is going to send one of those two projects to referendum, and then it's either going to pass or fail. And so, you know, if there's, if it does not pass, then, then we hold off on, on that greater study. Um, and then we would know. Um, my hope is by the time we schedule the referendum, we'll know which direction and we'll know whether we're looking at one or two buildings. Um, but the community conversations are going to be integral in, in giving the committee um, the feedback they need to make a decision on one of those two projects. At least from my perspective. Their, their voice is going to be very important in um, knowing which direction we move forward with. So. Um, you know, we can continue to keep this on our agenda and toss around some ideas. We can, I can start some like kind of focus group discussions and get some feedback, or you know, we can hold off a little bit longer and see where the discussion SBC goes.
I think we need to see where it goes. I mean, I don't, I'm not in favor of spending any money at all. So you don't, till you know.
I, I'm with you.
You might want to just figure out how to sell it and make money off the thing and fund the school.
Yeah, well, that was my proposal last year.
You still don't know, you still don't know what your finances are, what, what they cost.
Right. What our, my proposal last year was, this facility study is if there's a positive school building fund. If not, we don't need to, I don't know that we need to do this particular study right now, right? So it was, it was all contingent on, uh, which is why the timing of it was put till after. So um, we'll continue to move forward with that and, and kind of hold steady and, and see um, and encourage uh, as much participation in those uh, community engagement sessions as possible.
And is this a topic on the community engagement sessions?
Um, all we've outlined is the first one. The first one is a presentation of the, the two projects we have and um, the dollars that we have most recently been given from our oldest project manager. So I think that'll take up the bulk of it. Certainly, um, if I'm just a resident who's not um, in the know and participating in these things, it's something I would be asking about. So I anticipate we'll get questions from residents about what we're going to do with the other building. Uh, if not in the first session, as the conversations go on.
So I mean, I think it's and I don't know if I clearly articulated this when I, in my first statement, but like I think it makes sense to have one of those community conversations dedicated towards this discussion.
Okay.
And has, and ask the question, solicit feedback.
I'll put that up to SBC.
Yeah, I think that makes like those are the people who show up to that are going to be interested.
Yeah.
Unless why not? So. That's a good start.
Sounds good. All right, anything else on this topic?
No, I think that's I think that's important. What would you, what could you do with them? Or would you do with them? And, and there's a lot, you know, even if you said like, I just want to sell them. We still got to pull out tanks and stuff like that, and we all just think like you do that.
Or someone will say, just demolish them. Let's just demo them and let it go. And that recognizing the demo comes with a, a large price tag. Yeah. All right. Um, seeing no other new business, I will move to item eleven, present to speak. Look, you've all hung in there with us. I don't know that there's many people I started this meeting with. But uh, for those of you in the room, sorry, I'm going to start online. Uh, this time, so I'm going to go with hands that I see up across the screen. As I see them, I will start with Mr. Marshall.
Hi, guys. James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill Road. Um, just since we just closed on it, um, the future use of the existing school buildings discussion. Um, that is really going to be a critical point, um, either at least from an order of magnitude cost as to what the decision on the new school should be, um, how that goes ahead. Um, you know, you don't necessarily need to define a use, but there should be some effort to define what an order of magnitude cost should be if, say, Center School were to be demolished. Uh, or an order of magnitude cost as to what it would be from a gross square foot cost of what um, office, you know, officer administration you should be. Those numbers can be at least determines that you have an understanding of what a new school construction cost actually costs versus just the new school building itself. Because it is an ongoing, um, i- it is an ongoing item. Um, so I'll leave it at that. I know there's going to be a lot more discussion related to those buildings. Um, but it is, it's, it's not something I think you can gloss over as a part, as, not that you're glossing over, but I don't think it's something you can um, you know, table or wait till after the school building committee. You need to get some definition, otherwise uh, residents are not going to have an accurate picture what total project cost may be. Um, one other item is, we had talked previously, um, there was some discussion, I don't know whether it was last meeting or the meeting before, about um, providing an agenda item for um, how to appropriately register a complaint or what the um, you know, what an accountability procedure looks like in the town, whether it um, you know, be regarding a board or commission or a town employee. Um, I know you guys had a packed agenda today. I would like to see that, um, you know, discussed and clarified moving forward. Um, as I believe this preview was mentioned by Liza. Um, and then finally, um, I just want to say, um, you know, I am, I thank you for your consideration tonight, um, for the appointment for, you know, PZC. Um, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed by the outcome, obviously, and I, I, you know, I really should, probably shouldn't be surprised that in a political season, it feels like that decision may have been um, politically, surprisingly politically um, oriented. But um, I wish the two new um, appointees the best of luck, and I hope that they um, are successful in serving Wellington for um, you know, reasonable development and growth. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Teller.
Nick Teller, forty-nine Myrtle. Uh, just want to start off here. Um, you know, we just had a vote on the regional nineteen uh, seat, went to the people who vote. I, I just don't understand why this didn't go um, to the people. Uh, I think it was definitely political on, on both sides, Democrat's and Republican side. I think it was a political move. And it's unfortunate to see, you know, we had two people that I've never seen get involved in town, never heard them speak up for anything. And yeah, James, that's been fighting for the town for months. Um, and, and he's left off. It's unfortunate to see that. So uh, I know there's discussion about mill rate going down and this, that. The mill rate going up or down, it isn't really the real discussion. Uh, the real issue is how much more the taxpayer is going to pay. Uh, you can have a mill rate go down five percent, but the property values go up ten percent. Homeowners still paying more money uh, at the end of the day. Um, we don't have a revenue issue, we have a spending problem, and uh, unfortunately, a lot of governments do. Um, the transfer issue. Again, you know, if a person has dump sticker, president, there's no need to be searching documents. Uh, a fourth amendment is clearly states the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, and papers and effects against unreasonable searches. I want to stress again the fact that unreasonable search is no need to be searching people's paperwork and such uh, when they have proper documentation. It's a, it's an ego trip and a power trip, and uh, it needs to be checked. Um, I understand maybe policy, just because something's been policy doesn't mean it's uh, it's right. Out on the road, a cop can't just pull you over because they want to, you know, check your paperwork. They have to have probable cause. So we need to respect the constitution, and unfortunately, this town's not doing so. Uh, going back, last points here. Uh, twenty twenty-one, you know, uh, financial report has a, uh, so there were some things said at the, in the library meetings. Um, I understand we give them four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, health insurance going through the town to co-directors to end twenty twenty-three. Uh, they said they didn't know where the money was coming from, that they were just going to find the money. So are they going to just go and find the money on top of the four hundred thousand dollars that the town gives them? Um, another statement that was concerning was uh, that was made that something in a nebulous way, so they're going to write something in a nebulous way so they can't be nailed to the wall. Then Joan went on to say, I didn't say that on record, and then quickly re, uh, moved to adjourn. Just curious on what exactly she meant uh, in that, especially with the abrupt ending of that, that meeting. Um, they also, oh, that was in regards to them wanting to hire a consultant. We have directors, that, that's what they're paid to do, to guide the library. They don't need to be spending five thousand, ten thousand dollars extra. Why are we paying them forty-five, fifty thousand or whatever it may be? If we have to go out and, and pay another five, ten thousand dollars. Let's be responsible with our money. We hired them to do a job. They need to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Was one, twice, anyone in the room? Yes, sir.
Welcome to ninety-seven Costco. I just wanted to contribute to the conversation about the ultimate use, potentially uses of Center School and possibly Ball School. We don't know that. A member of our committee is well-versed in the disposal of these types of properties. And if you have to attract commercial concerns, that might be interesting. And he shared with us that's very difficult to do that. Uh, we tasked it with anyway, and um, he has nothing successful so far, not surprisingly, but that also tells of something. Um, commercial folks don't see a way to re, re-let buildings. So we may be in for something that's not desirable on our own. So that's something to ponder as this moves forward. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll just comment on that. Um, if you notice around Connecticut, there's lots of small towns, uh, many of them use a town hall as an old school. Um, I think it speaks to sometimes their, their use or lack thereof, so which can be discouraging as we move in the process. Um, you start to notice it more and more as they make their way around the state. So interesting, not necessarily uh,
Or senior housing.
Yeah.
Which we don't particularly have that need.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the room choose to speak? Yes, sir.
I want to, Dave dramatic, twenty-two Wellington Hill Road. Uh, I give the guys at the transfer station a lot of rock for what they did. Um, I happened to pull up there and I didn't have my license with me. Had my wife with me, so we didn't throw license. But I noticed though, after all this happened, that last Saturday I went up to the transfer station. You didn't have all the out-of-state plates, you didn't have all those out-of-town people showing up to pick the swap jam. And I think that is for town Wellington residents. And if you can't, if you got a company truck or you got a truck that's not registered in Wellington and housed here, I mean, maybe you should think about putting your, your vehicle into uh, Wellington instead of not having it registered, then you wouldn't have a problem. The other thing I would like to spend, and I know I'm going to get a lot of people just is I don't like the idea of having to put local parties up there at the transfer station on the weekends when, when it's the busiest time. I know why you're up there, trying to get all the people to get, well, why don't you use the town green instead? Instead of there, that's my, I'm an independent voter, so don't go looking at me strange. I have been for sixty years. I'm not going to change. That's fine, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I see two more hands. Oh, yes.
I, I just want to pop on, uh, comment on the public works. I think those guys up there do a pretty good job. And um, they were very professional. They stopped my car, asked for information. And I'm glad that they're doing what they're doing because, you know, it should be where the taxpayers pay for the service and really I, I can't find cheaters. And I'm allowed to guys do what you did. So keep doing a good, you guys always do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go online, starting across the board. Mr. Pippen.
Uh, hi, Thomas Pippen, um, for, so forty-six Schofield Road. I was just curious if um, renovating both Hall and Center were already off the table or if we are already thinking of cons- consolidating both schools? And if so, because I was a little concerned about in the future, if we were to build another school and possibly knock down either Center or Hall, if we couldn't find a use for either one of the buildings that wasn't knocked down um, to build a new school, what would become of it? I wouldn't want to see as what was said earlier about the two schools in Stafford that are been abandoned for decades now at this point. So I was just curious if renovating the school is either too much or if it was off the table. Just curious.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Christensen, Birch Meadow Lane. I was unable to speak at the beginning of um, the meeting to, for President to speak, but I did just want to um, thank James for all the work that he's done and speaking out. And I hope to see he continues to speak out and take politics out of um, anything that he does. I really appreciate it. So thank you, James.
Thank you. Melissa?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the guys at the dump as well.
Can you just identify yourself for the record? Sorry.
Do that all the time. I apologize. Fifty-five Mahaliak Road in Wellington. Um, I just want to give a shout out to the guys at the dump. Um, they do a great job, and I understand that we do have to um, make sure that people are not abusing the privilege. Um, but I mean, I don't, I don't, I still don't get, I guess, quite, um, if you don't own a truck and you borrow your dad's truck, who doesn't live in the town, I mean, can you still present your license um, to show that you live in the town? I mean, I just, I, I don't know. I guess I, I think I was really confused about that in the day that that happened. It sounded like, you know, if you had an out-of-state registered vehicle, like you just couldn't absolutely couldn't use the dump at all. So I, I, I guess I'm just a little confused about that. And I don't know, maybe if I would, was given heads up that they were going to start doing that, it would have been a little easier. Not just necessarily for me, but other people too. I mean, I had a very um, nice polite, open discussion um, that pretty much was pretty nice online on the Wellington Friends site. Um, but it was very confusing, I think, to a lot of the residents because it was, it's, I understand that the policy um, has been in place for a long time and it should have probably been done a lot. And I know with COVID and staffing and all of that, it probably went to the wayside. Um, but I'm curious what happens to um, kids that are UConn students that are living in housing here in Wellington. I mean, are they not allowed to use the dump? I mean, I understand that some places have dumpsters, but not everybody does. So how, how does that work? Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah, stand. Sarah, you should be able to unmute yourself. You're muted.
Here goes, here goes again. Um, I drove into the transfer station. I didn't have a sticker. And immediately a gentleman came up to me and uh, he, he ran back and got the stickers so professional, so polite. It took me five minutes to show my registration. And um, the, the men and uh, women perhaps who work there, I have never had anything but the most professional uh, treatment. I am so proud of our transfer station. And um, I, I wholeheartedly support their checking to make sure that we don't have all these outside people using our facility. Also was impressed with um, our candidates tonight, uh, the people who would like to be on planning and zoning. And um, excuse me, I hope James will continue to um, offer his suggestions and, and um, guidance from his perspective and um, I want to welcome the other two gentlemen. It, it sounds like we have some real good talent here and, and thank you for stepping up for planning and zoning. That's it.
Any other comments? Um, before we go, I just will clarify, uh, Mr. Pippen, um, if you'd like to reach out to my office, I'd love to talk to you about the school building committee and the process. Um, but the charge was a consolidated K, pre-k through eight school. So that's why you see them working in the direction of one um, school. That was the charge of the committee. All right.
Or, or renovate.
It was one consolidated, it's what it's a new school. It was one consolidated school. Um, and so that's the direction they moved in. They've not made, we've not made a decision on, on which of the two projects, but a consolidated school. All right, so I'll move on to good and welfare. Uh, for anyone who doesn't, doesn't know, tomorrow is um, election day. Is there anyone who didn't know that? Uh, voting will be held uh, upstairs in the town office building from six AM to eight PM. Um, if you have not registered to vote, then it does have same-day registration. You can do that right here in our office. Um, and the uh, registrars and then the folks in the full room will direct you to the proper location. So tomorrow's election day, uh, make sure you have uh, identification when you come in, um, and uh, good luck to all. Uh, Mobile Food Chair will be here at the town office building on Wednesday from eleven to eleven thirty. And just a reminder, it's open to not just all Wellington residents, um, but residents from other towns in Connecticut. Um, I'll, as always, continue to support our small businesses and restaurants. We do have a town meeting um, a week from today at seven PM, the old town hall. There are three items for consideration, appropriate There are three items for consideration, appropriation uh, for a new plow truck. Uh, appropriation of additional funds for the school building committee and the appropriation of funds from the STEEP grant. Uh, or the uh, Old Town Hall project. Uh, and last, the uh, school building committee, committee will be hosting its first community engagement event. Wednesday night, seven PM at Hall School to discuss the two potential school projects. The alteration extension of Hall Memorial School or a new building on a new site. That will be a hybrid meeting. You can um, reach out, uh, contact our website for the Zoom link. If you can't attend in person, in-person at Hall School or via Zoom, whichever is most convenient for folks. Um, and seeing no other business before us, I will make a motion to adjourn at nine oh four. The second is a non-debatable matter, all those in favor? I, Mr. Terry, thank you all. Thank you for speaking around, and I probably should have to thank you to.